So we're going to call the meeting to order. So this is a city council meeting for August 18th at 7:07. First order, I guess, will call, let's start with Steve.
Uh, Steve, Ward one.
Mickey Oyer, Ward one. May Popeye, City Attorney.
Right, maybe Ward two, inter mayor.
Casey's got, I've retired Ward two. And I want to thank the city job.
All right, we'll go to pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance. Does that, no, Evan's been here, sorry, so Evan's been here. He worked under Ryan. Um, Paul's been on.
December 16th or 18th or something.
So he was briefly in Ryan.
Well, no, he's in the interim, yeah. And I guess we can throw that out there. We have ads going across the state for that position. Uh, first more item on there, I guess approval of minutes from July 8th. Anybody has any questions on there, concerns? There's anything that was missed or needs to be changed?
I'll make a motion for the minutes from the July 8th special meeting.
A second.
Oh, you want July 8th regular meeting?
July, uh, the July 8th, yeah.
Thank you.
Regular meeting, yeah.
It says special meeting up here.
What?
It says regular meeting on the, on the.
I know, I'm on it.
So actually, it was a special meeting, wasn't it?
Was it?
No, no, that was the regular meeting.
Oh, yeah, it was.
So I need to get that scratched.
Yep.
Okay, all right.
With the adjustment.
What did adjustment posture here for July 8th, 2020?
There we go. Steve, you had a second?
Yes.
Call in favor? Nice have it. Approval of claims payable. Lacey, you want to explain to me?
I'll explain some things here. It's a little higher than normal. We had some projects that we are paying for, the exterior of the building and the concrete at the ball field. Um, and we also have an extra week of bills that came in because we moved the meeting. So I was able to put those in here as well. We have some Dog Days things in here, which gets paid out of the donations. So, um, those technically don't come out of, you know, our money, out of the donation money. So, um, I think that's the majority of the donations here.
So we had an extra week, so there's some extra bills, which you say in the long story. And then obviously, we had the road work for South Fifth. Um, that's, that's completed. There was the concrete work at the, uh, fields.
Right.
Right. And then, uh, we had obviously some.
Is the Night River the same valuable for it? Was that the other one these time?
Yes, yep, yep.
So, Lacey, so on the fireworks, I thought you had a sponsor.
We do. I still have to pay the bill, but, but it would come out of the Dog Days fund because ISG was tying it up wherever Parker is. ISG, um, covered it. So.
Exact.
It's a check that was cut out of our account, but it would come from the city celebrations fund where the donations go.
So ISG made its own motion to the Dog Days fund.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Did anybody see the fireworks?
They were on.
They were unbelievable.
I'll see it online.
Yeah, I've never seen a show synced to, uh, music like that before. It was amazing.
Really?
And to see it at the field was unbelievable.
What happened with the expense for the Dog Days shirts? Since they were sold that way, it will also come out of it somehow?
Yes, anything that says Dog Days here comes out of the actual fund, um, not out of our general fund. So, yes, it'll come out of it. Yes. And we ended up with 600 more than we needed this year. Should hold that till the next year.
For next year?
Yes.
But that being said, I'm.
Anyone who would like to attend the rapid meeting on Dog Days, that Marlowe, right here.
There we go.
Would like a second?
All in favor? Public time, if anybody would like to.
We're gonna have some for public time. Doug, do you want to go ahead and start public timeout?
So my name is Ryan, sitting down in the Dora Abbott's build service. Um, Mr. Mayor and City Council, City Resident, thank you for letting me speak quick tonight. Uh, this year actually marks the 50th anniversary of the Dora Abbott's community and build service. And I'd like to take a second tonight to recognize the important role that Baltic does play in our story. Since 1975, our mission has been pretty simple, to make sure that no one in our service area needs to face a relief seal. That mission has always included the residents of Baltic. Whether it's a medical emergency at home, a car accident in the roadway, or when you call to a local business, we're proud to respond here with skilled and proficient care. Over the last 50 years, we've estimated that we've answered around 20,000 emergency calls across our service area. And of course, many of those are right here in the community of Baltic, where again, we are proud to partner with the local fire department to provide that fast, coordinated, and urgent care service. Your support obviously makes that possible. As cost for education, staffing, vehicles, equipment continue to snow grinding, uh, we rely heavily on our partnership with the city of Baltic, as well as the other communities that we serve, to make sure that we can continue to maintain that vast, high-quality care that your residents deserve. So, our 50th anniversary isn't just a celebration of our past. It's also a call for us to work together for the future. Now, with your continued investments, we can keep answering the goal for the next 50 years and beyond. So thank you, uh, City Council and the community for your trust, uh, through your partnership, and for making emergency care a priority here in Baltic. I don't know if you can take questions, but if you're happy to answer any questions of anybody.
Yes, I just have a statement. I made another mistake, Evan. This is the Baltic Fire Department's request, and I meant to put in the Dell's one. So it's, is that 10,000, is again, is there a change? Which is the theme of last year.
Can you just give a little rundown? Because when the city is still building, if somebody does send a, they're going to transport it, then that gets charged if they don't go, but you guys still show up?
So, uh, it kind of depends a little bit. Um, if we show up on a scene and we provide some care, supplies, things like that, they remember that patient will get a bill. Um, then if someone that shows up and says, you guys can go home too? Yeah, nobody's getting billed for that. Um, if we show up and, you know, help somebody else before you put in their chair, not to give them a bill for that.
So then just the bill and, I don't know, set the expenses?
It is not, unfortunately, the billing side is, um, uh, we could spend all night, I could spend all night talking about billing side, but, um, you know, when we, a lot of people look at the bills and they go, oh my gosh, that's really, really expensive. When you start to realize the, the cost and staffing right now, if we were to actually staff it in house, three, 24 hours a day at a station, we'd be looking at a million dollars. We obviously don't do that in the local system, a million dollars. So when we kind of look at the expense of annuals, how much the trip cost, the supplies cost, the staffing cost, the readiness cost, what we bill on it is the. Patients who are already patients, right, with that age, and you're on this only get what, living with age, well, I mean, it is easy to estimate. Um, and it's extremely, and already part of the company to deal with. So maybe by pulling a list and it's based on necessity, and actually paying the full bill, and those kinds of things work. There's another one that it, it changes to the more, that'd be two, so. Well, thank you, 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 and we do our own billing in house, we have our own builders. Uh, in house, we, we, just about seven years ago, I mean, there's investing, we have been, you know, billing, uh, we have building services as well. So we built for, uh, three other improvements. And so that helps offset the cost of us doing our billing. Uh, while it bought breaks even, we saved on $15,000 a year, gave somebody upstairs. So.
I was a recipient of ambulance back in 81. I lost my leg, just hope you don't.
Anyway.
Bob Meyer applied the EMT, he was the EMT at that.
Okay.
They, when I went to the hospital, they said that he did an exemplary job. He was well, very well trained. Thank you for your service and thanks for saving mine.
Thank you, welcome. We, we just have a big 50th anniversary back. And we had some of the original folks from 1975 and early 80s that were there and was fun to visit with all those people and hear all the stories. We even got to hear from Jim Callan, who ran the ambulance service on the few that were homeless. I guess that answered your really question. Do you ever have more questions on that? If you visit with one on one or whatever, it's, it's complicated. Well, we try to be fair, but we are the most expensive ambulance service in the county. Um, and we try to be.
And I was during public time, and, um, I wasn't there. I was just asking May if we can go ahead and just vote on this tonight. She believes we can to approve the 10K. Obviously, we, we, we don't want this service, right? It's the same as what it was.
This is for the 2025? So the one last year that we approved, I have for you to, you should probably take that. So this is for next year's check.
And if it's irregular, we can have. If it is irregular, we could revisit next, next meeting and just do the same thing.
So you need a motion to approve $10,000 for.
Donation.
I make a motion for the $10,000.
There we go, a second. Call in favor?
If you have any questions, please reach out. Dana, you had issues, love.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, me, we got one free ride.
Anyone else for public?
I guess one of the, I would just, I had a conversation this weekend, the post office actually, and with all of the conversations that we had about the, the, the young men up there and the lovely people concerned, what it looked like. There was concern about the old buildings, just across the road here, that all looked really bad. Is there anything the city can do to start, um, motivating people to do things with their exterior structures?
We addressed one, right? Um, we let her go out.
Vote enforcement sent a letter out to one that's been working on the exterior of the building now.
Knows that.
Yep.
Um, we have some other stuff in the works. Um, I can tell you, I'm not a big person on community property. I, I think that's like a worst case scenario there. Um, but yeah, I mean, we're aware of it, we're kind of just working.
Remembered in the comprehensive plan for redevelopment, get all of those on Lovely Avenue, on both sides of the road that actually are marked in the comprehensive plans for redevelopment, until you get a decent ways down Lovely Avenue, I'll ask you. So if you take a look at the comprehensive plan, you know, light English program, um, in the comprehensive plan is in.
I said, put that on the website if you want to, yeah.
If you go on your planning and zoning, it's at the very bottom, it's not, it's not, it's not. Something to take a look at. Because a lot of those are zoned just differently, like one, B1, like the.
Sorry, I'm just trying to mirror my, so.
And if anyone's looking, love it, love it.
Yeah. I should have left it on before.
Oh yeah, anyone else? There we go.
Yes, I, I would like to address that this was brought up a couple months back. You know, I brought up the Frisky Golf.
Can you, can you give the name and address for everybody?
Our.
Name and address for everybody else, yeah.
Supreme, one of my, is Republic.
Perfect, thank you.
So, um, as far as the Frisky Golf, a couple months back.
Yeah.
Has anything more come out about that?
You know.
She has now a whole intermediate window coming up, will be coming.
I, I, I know I talked to, you know, you know, to the news, he was true. They could locate it, because I think you'd have to move a couple of them. And of course, that's going to change with Ryan leaving too, so I'll have to, with the next. But yeah, it's, it's, I, I.
Got hold of her signing from the Frisky Golf.
Sure.
What's going to do for that?
Right. Nope. I understand.
And that was put in after our house was built, so it isn't a cheap bill on the.
Right. Yeah. I'll have to, uh, when we get a new maintenance supervisor hired, um, we'll have more. But then I can even ask Justin to have some.
And on that same basis, I think with the department being there, we need to get signs up because there is activity going on in it from after or at night. And I don't think it's illegal or legal activity, and the sheriff's department is not into it. By the time you call them, people are gone. And that light is working there at the bill shoulders.
Which one?
The one right. So you know where we live.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
It's been brought to a couple of times over two years.
Okay.
And that needs to be six, five lights.
You know, I don't know that the, uh, evidence, like the lights are actually working in the one up at the diamond either.
I don't even, I don't think so. They were on at one point.
Is it a street light?
No, there's lights up under the shelters.
Okay.
Well, I saw all the light bulbs are on.
Yeah, that's the one here.
Well, when we get to the table, it's, I made it much more flexible or stuff, so. A light bulb or not?
Yeah, the one up by the, I'm unable to see out of the diamond.
That one surprised me.
Yeah, yeah.
There's people standing on top of the, you can't really see.
So it comes on.
Yeah, all right. And we've got a budget meeting coming up too, so we can talk, uh, maybe we get up there, get an estimate if we have to from Will. Uh, if there need to be repairs, we should put it in with that.
I know, I don't feel like I should ask you what the tolling up there, that the department's activity that we're on. I'm sure it's not legal activity. We shouldn't.
Anyone else for public time?
School starting, it'd be nice to see us, yeah, good speeds, I love late night, just sit down.
Let's put it in the shop.
I was on top of a police cars, getting those speedlights working, so they'll be flashing. Those can run, you just mute them.
Have they done anything to, to account for parking issue on or the walk path?
Anyone else? Well, post-public time? Working on something here for the next.
There's something going on with the, like, when I tried to print something to it, just, it's, and I think so. I don't know if there's a white light issue going on. Did you?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, okay.
Do you have?
The mask?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, I sure do.
So we really don't have anything to vote on necessarily for, um, public hearing, is it right? There's no recommendation that came forward, the planning and zoning. It does though, there's an opportunity here, if people like to kind of, if the council members like to voice their opinion on it. I was trying to get this up, a little hard for everybody, Christ Jesus, this is the future map for, forecasted for comprehensive plan. I did, did talk to one of the original council members on this that worked on this in 2003. I hadn't talked to, um, other consumers later. And I guess like I said, they encountered people coming forward with different ideas for some of these thoughts as well, right? One that comes to mind to me is, went to lots, essentially, the Baltic starters, they wanted to do. So, it's nothing that hasn't happened in the past. Voice and opinions on any of that.
If I'll look at a few things, please.
It's just discussion.
We don't get our public hearing?
There was no recommendation or action made by PFC, so there wouldn't be no action to be heard today. Uh, and as you pointed out, there was a procedural defect, so there.
So we get to reschedule it?
You may reschedule again.
And we have the expense in the city, you don't have to pay us something kind of ours because it wasn't our procedural defect.
Likely, we'll have to review, but I think it would be beneficial if the council voiced their opinion. With the developer here, it's a good opportunity for each individual council member to set forth, you know, how they would have voted today with the proposal that was proposed.
Do you want the number 10 votes?
I want discussion, and communications has been asking repeatedly for clarity from the council. This is a noticed hearing or meeting, excuse me. There's opportunity for each council member to participate in the session and communicate opinions.
I would also like to know how many constituents they've spoken to to establish those meetings.
You can want that.
I can want that, you don't have to, but I wanted to add this, because you are all elected officials and you should be representing all your constituents, not just eight of them. I would like to know how many conversations you've actually had with your constituents. This has been going on for almost three months now. You all have had plenty of opportunity to talk to the majority of your constituents.
I would think if I told you 20, you would ask for 30. If you, if I told you 30, you'd ask for 40. And I guess I wasn't necessarily tracking myself, I don't know if anybody else has been. Um, but we've had some, at least some different conversations with different communities. They all live here, we have neighbors, they're friends of the community. Some people are more willing to reach out until one's, yeah, right? And which is great. So, I mean, I guess I can't give you my exact number. Yeah, I guess in my opinion, right? Um, hey, I'm not really changing, changing the zoning on that. I just want to put it out there, just so you know, there's no party in it. And you guys are free to share your opinions or not, that's up to you. This isn't a voting situation, it's not legal. Since we had some time slot.
Would you elaborate? Just what has led you to that decision, point out decision?
Well, I mean, it's pretty stated in there, that was laid out. If you look at, I'm just going to throw out here, under mapping, there's places that allow for R3, right? And there's places that are allowed for, um, right? Ev, in my opinion, itself, every prior member of this council has stuck with that plan. And I guess I intend to do the same.
To that plan?
Correct. Concerning Lovely Avenue. This might have been.
Fires this year, right?
Correct.
Put the corner that was rezoned to R3 and V1 and split.
I think there's a far cry difference.
No, but you just said that they followed the plan.
They did, they did.
Yeah.
Yeah. And obviously, there's been tweaks, I'm, I'm sure, and it's probably going to happen in the future at some point, right? That's, to me, is a pretty big tweak. I can understand, don't get me wrong, I can understand wanting to use, uh, the sort of.
Means for the, oh, that's your inside, what, C is, and.
Use there, the dead space behind it, it was the edge of city. I can kind of understand it, right? Um, there was no. I would say it did.
Plus he is a local investor.
Correct, correct. And, and I'll say this, they've maintained the heck out of that property. Uh, and, and there was nothing taxing on any kind of grid, right? I mean, it was just unused space, it's dead space. There's a five grand difference from one person putting a car in a garage back there versus somebody coming and going multiple times a day.
And the utilities.
Yeah.
So the dead space behind the V1 zone is not considered dead space in this instance?
Here, well, we don't know, we don't know, I mean. There could be.
Here's the corner, the dead space behind it, the use for storage units. Would, I'm, I'm not going to go over there, just because.
No, I.
Like the dead space behind.
We don't know what.
Is being used for apartments, if they were to suggest a bunch of storage units since.
I don't know, no, we don't know what could potentially go into that property. There could be somebody with a business that needs the debt.
Yeah, I'm just trying to define dead space.
True.
And trying.
Is that there's, for on either side of them, there on that particular, the apartments and that, um, storage units.
Yeah, and I did talk with both neighboring properties.
Yeah. East and west. Like Hoover's has got their spot, they're at, they're at dead, no, they don't want nothing. The other side property, they said absolutely not, they don't want apartments there. And they're, they're taxpayers, everyone's staying packed food. And I think they deserve a voice.
Sure, absolutely.
But the other thing is, is I've heard for years about this water and store, and everybody just puts a dead ear until there's a profit thing going on. I'm, I'm for it, but we got to do first things first. Take care of one thing before you have disaster in the future. We can't afford disasters, and the taxpayers can't afford to worry. That's where I'm at. I'd love to have a school fill up, every seat, they would flood up those doors. But they're not going to get that if we got to keep backstepping and trying to fix it. And it's, uh, and so far, I, I just really haven't seen anything that really entices me to make that happen because it's just been so, uh, back and forth.
Do you have any, any update or input from the ISG on where they're at for water, sewage, or drainage, or utilities? Like, how would this project impact, like?
Other than what he said at that meeting that we had, nothing's updated since the last month's meeting or Ryan's.
Just for clarification for the group in another room, if you. Yes. City.
It's going on this, going to the city, because people can't hear you, thank you.
There, there, there currently is capacity, but what it's, system currently sets, however, there, we are nearing capacity. Um, and that capacity is based off of the current flow rate that the city is seeing. It is below, um, Dan's standard. So again, there is a little bit of capacity, but we are.
So we have capacity in this project?
Probably, it is, it is. Either for development, say, I don't know, 24 homes, 20 homes there. There's probably more people in a house than that. Yeah, 20 homes, is that going to be a lot of wood for 24? So you would say at this point, important, maybe it was 22 or 23. So it's a mile ago, and maybe we visited, you know, more details. Since that, someone can give you a, for answer. Yes, there was exactly. This, 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 they can see in the system, we're just.
Thank you, thank you for that. Yeah, well, you know, on this here with capacity, you said with the twenty two, twenty three?
Yeah.
I've been here since then. Plus, we've already, like stated, we're dealing with one water issue now, that still hasn't been resolved all the way. I've been here for a long time enough, and if you put that develop the apartments up there, you have all the rain out going down to Elm Street, who has already had balance with all the water going through there. So you're gonna have additional water issues.
There's a detention pond.
Who beat that retention pond across the road? That doesn't hold squat when it's raining yet. And it all goes down. I understand it's in the plan, but I also know what has happened to Elm Street. And I don't think that's something that can be just overlooked, that water still has to go down. And there's homes along there that have had to pump water. And I don't think any of them might have to be back pumping water again. The gentleman sitting next to you will assure you that our detention pond will not, I'm not taking word of anything right now, but you were on the other side, now you're on the other side.
Very familiar with detention ponds.
Let's get back to the council, did you have any comment?
I take the. No, I don't think that kind of, I think what we're doing right now, I think we should leave it as is. More of it stay up there, and there are other places to build apartments. That's always been my stance on that.
Where's that?
Where the old trailer park was.
Steve was on P and C, so I was just curious, because I didn't catch the end of that meeting. I didn't catch the end of the P and C meeting, it was going this.
Oh, sorry.
P and C's input, because I might have missed something.
Yeah, so they, they didn't vote on anything for any recommendations for us, and that's why we're having this.
Yeah.
I just, I run into the school and vote for.
Sure.
Yeah, no, I just did, just a simple fact that I don't see the traffic being any more comfortable than it is on Lowly Avenue. If we add more units to that street, you only get one driveway in and out. And traffic from the school is already atrocious during school season and during functions. I lived on, I lived here for over fifty years, and I've been, it's terrible trying to get through town or the school function. And parking is terrible, everything's already done, it's not yet. Like you said, I'm not against apartments, I'm totally for apartments, I wish we could get some apartments. Things have got switched before we even went to one four. We gotta grow structurally first, we gotta have a good foundation before we proceed. Taxpayers are getting killed in this town, somebody's gotta stand up for them. It increased every year, especially with the school, I love the school, beautiful school, now we gotta pay for it.
Well, if we run the water and sewer bills up to three hundred dollars a month, what is that gonna do to your citizens or our state income?
We're really gonna have to increase our rates now to pay for things. And that's gonna be hard sell. To pay for apartment complex and even more development, I have these development. Somebody's gotta pay for it, it's the people that live here, it's not the apartment dwellers. I, I wish we could get these people in, but we can't, not right now.
Is the timeline of what is needed to make those deaths feasible?
I don't know, you got two million dollars.
Those city.
That would get started.
We don't get two million.
So allocated to. Right, so I wanna say it was, I wanna say it was back in December, I brought up, but we need to do an incremental increase on sewer and water. We can start working towards saving some of that cost, so it's not all just lumped in at one time. And I think we need to do it, I think we, we need to visit it. We do, I mean, we do have very reasonable water costs from the.
And we are, we owe them an.
So they have some, but nobody likes an increase, no one. But I think it's, it's better to do it slower.
One could also argue that if you bring in more people, that spreads that bill, so it isn't as expensive for all of the taxpayers involved. I know as a taxpayer myself, I want more people, so that my tax bill isn't as heavy, because it spreads the load. So withholding development actually is costing the taxpayers.
Sorry, this is.
Well, the question got to talk.
Yeah.
Go on, you talk.
Let's move on.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of the project, I think.
I heard you did, I get it.
That we could draw the line, and I honestly think, based on all the people that I've talked with, I've up to eighty-five people now that I'm just kind of discussing with on the curtains, people at the school, I'm there every day here, so. I mean, numerous people, and don't get me wrong, there are several people that I'm favorite, but still, you know, still have those conversations with them. And honestly, I think that a lot of people were not necessarily in favor of the initial plan of the four apartments. And now that there's an idea of commercial on the front side, especially built to suit, I think that Baltic citizens see the, the ones that I'm talking to, see that as an opportunity for Baltic to get an opportunity for the promotion business to come in on either side, and then also to see some additional living opportunities for people that can't afford to build a house up in R one spaces that are available. So, up in Grand Park, Village Crossing, those houses, I mean, to build one of those houses up there, you're three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Like, hold on, sixty is in. They can afford it, they know it's. If you look at statistics on people that live in apartments as well, they have a higher, they, they have a higher use case of spending at convenience stores, a lot of our businesses, Justin Goff, like I talked about in my last informational meeting, is very in favor of this project happening because it's more people. More people in town, more people that are gonna bicep the gas station, the gas, most of the convenience stores.
And that's a good point, Edward, but the people in the, the apartments, they do not pay water bills.
Yes, they do, as part of their rent.
And their rent.
And their rent, yeah.
And they're all separately metered, they'll pay the water bill.
But a house pays more for tax, for.
And taxes.
Yep, and we, we have zero foundations up in the development right now, the development is double building.
Okay, the other question I have is, when will the commercial building be built? If it's gonna be twenty years from now, I'm hard no on that.
There hasn't been a commercial building built on any of those commercial buildings.
Well, if they're gonna wait.
It could say just as much time as the rest of them. At least something's being built and we're lowering taxpayers' taxes and bringing more kids into the school.
I'll just have to agree to disagree, so.
We should close it, I just, I just figured we'd use that time. Yeah. Right, so we're gonna move on to old business.
To make a motion to postpone it, wasn't there?
It wasn't a public hearing, there was no vote. Yeah, yeah. So Panther Graphics.
You got to formulate.
Well, I had something put on the screen, but apparently I don't, so we talked about this before.
I'm plugging the TV, can you just unplug the TV and plug it back in and see?
It's like the level telescope.
We had discussed ordering new, just some T-shirts for the Public Works employees, and some polos, and a couple hoodies. So I had sent all that off to Panther, they gave me a quote, and so I was just kind of looking for, I mentioned to to put that through now, and I just figured if there was any extras, we could sell them from here, just so that we make all of our, you know, get our money back for those, yeah.
People get multi-swag.
Some swag, because everybody wants to have a city of.
I'm only, have any extras to take up on order?
On, I can tell you, I'm gonna vote here. Sorry, I forget that she sent it to them. Okay, so of the polos, I was gonna order eight of the polos, and then twelve of the hoodies. And, and then I was ordering just like some rain defender ones for the, for the Public Works guys. And a jacket, oh, two jackets. So, that's, it wasn't much, but I just thought, whatever the council and the employees, if they don't want it, we can put it out there for sale. I don't have.
Yeah.
And I, and I purchased.
I don't even know, do we need a motion on that, that dollar's a little.
It was, the amount total for all of those items.
What we can do with it, it's not gonna hurt anything.
Was fifteen, six, three, and that's for quite a few.
Yeah.
Seven, five thousand, so.
Right.
Yeah, that's for like twenty-four items, so, yeah.
That's pretty cheap.
And they also have a logo.
Motion.
I'm excited, sure.
On favor, right? Motion, I guess it's Fourth Street, West Side, so this is just kind of an informational. Fourth Street, west side of the street, up the top of the hill, there was a, no parking in the west side of the road. When the street road got redone, the signs kind of vanished, and we ordered new signs, they're, they got placed yesterday? Today, okay. So just as a, just as a reminder, no parking on the west side of Fourth. And honestly, it's just because it's a really narrow road, and it, it's traffic, so.
It's also gonna be enforced.
Well, so far, we've had to do it. You know, obviously, it'll be posted.
Well, the sheriff's department.
Well, if, if it's a sign, I would assume they'd get a ticket if they're parked there, right?
So like the school.
Right, Mr. Sheriff?
The school.
Would they get a ticket if they park in a no parking, with a no parking sign?
The city already.
I think it, it was, wasn't it? Yeah.
I don't think it was.
So we would maybe have to do a resolution down the road here.
We looked at the ordinances, and that would be within the city's part of the design, and it would, that's actually the ordinance.
Sign in the ordinance group.
But we can get direction to the sheriff's department.
Yeah, we can send it over to them.
Enforcement mechanism.
And at the same time that this was talked about previously, another good signage need was also discussed.
Okay.
Has the signs gone in at Baltic Heights parking lots, that there's no overnight parking?
I don't know, Evan, have we done any signs up there?
Because it was written forward and discussed at that time, and if it hasn't been, really needs to happen.
Think I remember talking about it.
Especially given what we're just saying about activity of things, and the concern of how it will go forward. And everything, get it in place now, and not have to deal with it.
It was a discussion item.
Yeah.
What time, and I don't think we added it to the agenda, so make a motion.
So we want no overnight parking, and we want ten PM to.
Yeah, ten PM to six.
Ten to six.
Yeah, because that changes the overtime.
Okay. I don't remember that. Indian.
Yeah, we have, we're also talking.
Do that to.
Closing, ten o'clock, you have a game there. You gotta get something in there, get a protection.
Right.
That would be fantastic.
That was not part of the conversation that I can see where you'd like it.
I also think that we're gonna stop all of it.
But then if the sheriff comes by, and there's a vehicle in there.
If speeding could be controlled a hundred percent by a no speeding sign.
Yeah.
But yeah, we can, but we can put it up there, so people are aware, yeah. Yeah.
So when you're doing that, are you going to do the main parking lot, and then the parking lot, which is.
We'd have to do, we'd have to do the ones that we could, right, which is.
The two gravel part.
The two gravel lots, yeah, on the west side.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What else are you gonna do the signage for too, to keep people?
Right, yeah, I mean, that'd be a big thing, since there's.
Next agenda.
So we're gonna do that again, and ordinance change resolution.
For the part.
Yeah. Like if we actually do something to make sure, well, the part four of the street, like if you have to review any ordinances or resolutions to make sure people, to, to get them fine, not being sidetracked.
Yeah, yeah, and it is within the ordinance, there's a couple roles.
They're probably both a little different, the street one's different than the county one's.
Yeah, yeah, the part comes from different instances.
So maybe, even if that's already in our ordinance, maybe the, the next meeting, we just update the public on the ordinance. If you order the, the, actually, so that will, whether it was, when we go up to something.
Yeah, so they wanna make sure it's more.
Start putting on signs.
All right, that's what we have for fourth, new business. So, back in January, we had positions on the council that opened up, people left, right? We sought out legal with Meyer Henry Sargent, and we want to make sure that we're coming back to fulfilling all the positions on the council. What we did, because we had to have forum right away, we had to add a position immediately, right? Then we had, I did an appointment for Edward, he was, he was, he gave, that's not gonna.
We do, because you can't hear on video, if we get the AC. That's why it's always freezing when you first come in here, because we try to really crank it down, so.
So Edward actually came forward right away, which is fantastic, not all the time do people want to do the job, right? And Edward came through right away, did the suggestion, well, given improved it. I'd like to get us back to full council, I have another person that's interested in being on the council. In order to do so, I wouldn't take someone out of the road and put them into the mayor's slide, we've kind of had some discussions about that. Like I said, back in January, so what I'd like to do is take and move the interim position that I'm in into the mayor position. And then I would have to, I believe, may run again for that at the next election cycle, right? And then Eric, unless he's interested in coming forward for the Ward two alderman seat, that gives us a complete council with proper voting.
And we can do that now?
We can do that now.
What if there's more than one person that wants, is interested in that role? Our both roles.
I mean, I don't know, I've, I've asked around, I'm gonna make the recommendation, I, I guess I'm interested in making a recommendation, move me to, to, from mentor mayor to mayor. And I'm just already just telling you right now that I'm going to recommend Eric for Ward two.
So have you had discussions with other council members regarding that?
We all discussed this back in January eventually to fill, yeah.
Sure, I guess I just.
I mean, I remember a couple meetings, yeah, no, a couple meetings ago too, and I remember, and I guess we should probably have something sooner, but I remember there was question about making everybody's council vote.
Yeah.
Right, and so, I think the best way to do it is obviously to get back to a full council.
I'd like to make a motion, put Walt Ryan in mayorship.
Can we have further discussion on that before?
He'd like to.
Yeah, I, I mean, I just feel like there's, this is the first I'm hearing about this regulation. I feel like when, back when you recommended me, there was discussion between Nikki, between Steve, between you. I, I, I had not had that discussion, and I don't feel comfortable voting on that without, like, me too, let's talk to someone.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
So, we haven't met.
Well, this isn't an election.
No, but it's appointed him to the council.
Well, we appointed you.
Yeah, and I talked to you before you did that.
I don't think you talked to me.
I talked to Steve, and I talked to Brian, and Brian said that he did. I am completely out of the, so it's, I just would like to. If no one feels the same way, I mean.
I personally, I don't have this gentleman at all, so.
Personally, I'd like, personally, I'd like to table it and talk to Eric, and, you know, if there's any other recommendations for a city council, so now the public is aware that we as a city council are moving to filling that position, to see if anybody else is interested. I mean, you ultimately get to appoint the position, and then we vote on his council.
As someone who lives in Ward two, I would like very much to not see us continuing to delay for me to have full alderman representation.
You do, currently, Brian's Ward two, and I'm Ward two.
I know, but I'm, I'm hearing he doesn't want to wear two pants, so.
Yeah, and now we're, now we're aware that he's willing, that he's going to change those counts, and so now I'm giving the public an opportunity to have a discussion, and other people come to.
Brian.
We certainly can.
So procedurally, we have a pending motion on the appointment of Brian to mayor. So we need to call for a second on that motion, and then we can open it up for discussion, and then vote on that before moving on to discussion on, on the next appointment.
Okay.
So do we have a second on a second motion? All votes in favor?
Favor.
Aye.
Both? So we have uh one post to carry it. Mm-hmm. And um and then um I'd like to address the second one, which is um uh entering Eric into Ward Two.
Yeah, that's a table that I'd like to make a motion to table that to have further discussion with community members and people that can all work together. I'd like to get to.
I'm going to confirm. I actually have the statutes laid out here, but I believe the appointment would be made by the mayor.
Yeah.
Uh.
And then vote it on by the council.
Not sure that we need confirmation for your council. Just one second. I want to confirm that.
There's nobody mowing up.
No, she's definitely. I mean, if everyone wants to.
Can you take it? Can we take?
Yeah, take it right. Yeah, you would talk, yeah.
No, just like, can you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure.
You know, like.
Yeah, so I I've uh been in Baltic about ten years now. Um married to my uh wife Lindsay and have a daughter Emily. She's gonna be our first girl this year. Um and I work full time for the Southfield area and we come shopping, so.
Me, nothing else?
No, I can know.
Um. Man, I know.
You go to a mall.
Baltic group.
Are you a member of the Legion too?
I know.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Where did you, where did you manage from here to off her food? I think that was the guy who was doing it in nineteen ninety-nine.
What major are they?
Yeah.
What major are they?
They're way out.
Um so we were kind of looking at the um before we had, I know they were kind of looking at the small, small town because.
Yeah.
I grew up in a small town, my wife grew up in a small town. And um who are our future kids to go to a small school.
Sure.
And um so we looked at T, Bill Rapids, and then all like the decide on politics. We know a great teacher. Now, we're gonna like the school, that kind of thing, that's kind of sway our votes. Ask it like that.
I was on the same boat back in the day and it's really, it came from twelve is the reason why you tear clean. Before I was just.
Uh he's.
He chatted the afternoon.
Yeah.
Of course, the statute references another statute that I didn't print it out, so.
Um I just say it's in section nine, isn't it, Dave?
Yep, yeah, I don't have the whole chapter.
Here, I'm looking it up for you.
I have it, thanks.
Sure.
Okay, so the remaining members will appoint the replacement.
They're saying we have to vote like yes or no, and it can't be tabled. Right. So the mayor makes the motion then really, and then we just move.
Correct.
Okay.
The Robert's rules allows him to request a table, doesn't he?
I I was just confirming that the mayor didn't have appointment power, so it's a lot of.
So I can make a motion to table the agenda item for the.
Yes.
I make the motion.
No second? Yes. Did you like that? Smoke to make your appointment?
Well, this includes a, oh, you're Ward Two, just kidding. Is he Ward Two now that you're appointing the mayor?
No, he's.
No. No.
He's mayor.
Mayor. Yeah.
But I can just make the.
Oh, for the, you, well, you can announce her.
Yeah. So I would like to make uh appointment of Eric Combs for Ward Two. I just need a motion for that.
I'll second that motion.
I think.
Yeah, yeah.
I want Eric Combs to city council for Ward Two effective today.
I understand.
Perfect. May do I have to do a swearing separate?
We need a.
Let's go quick.
Okay, sorry.
Almost.
Uh I'll in favor.
Aye.
Pose.
Motion serious.
So we need to do.
We just, can I have a quick discussion on that?
Exactly.
Motion.
Yeah, sure.
I just still confused that we're like in sudden, you you had a message.
We had a map, but I I I heard okay. I have too. I I heard nothing but good things about just now.
I should get it up. I couldn't just now.
You know, I don't see a tire written all over me, so I'm pretty sure you appreciate it.
I'm just curious, like, I'm trying to make.
Yeah, no, I I have not met him, no, but there's fifteen hundred people I've really met, Mr. Peter. But I'm all for.
Sure you want to get that for that? Not that one, just.
Well, if it was, well, I know Eric's a brother, so I'm gonna be. There's one title.
He won.
He begged to differ.
So um. Do a swearing.
Oh, yeah.
And man.
This has to leave us right here.
There you go.
Oh, there's nothing. Oh, yeah.
I think it's, you're maybe the only one. But but as long as you guys, I've seen some. I've seen. I'm gonna. Those. Good cheese, dude.
I see, I thought you handled it sort of.
You did. I'm already all set. You want me to reprint it?
Yeah. She has this.
That's mine.
But she uh.
So. Our dad. Except seven. We've got a new list.
Eric, if you want to stand with me, raise your right hand. Um I, Eric Combs, having been appointed to the office of Ward Two Alderman of the city of Baltic, South Dakota. Do solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of South Dakota and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your knowledge and ability, perform all duties of your set office as provided by law. Further, you will render a true account of all money, credit, accounts, and property of any kind when they come into your possession while performing the duties. If so, answer I will.
I will. Alright. Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
And alright, next one is office assistants. Lacey, let us have.
Trista coming back. We're really excited. Trista, Trista Boland was working with us last, last year and she took a little break and she is coming back to help me out and I'm super grateful, so.
She comes back tomorrow, right?
She comes back tomorrow and she'll do the same hours she did before, which was like eleven to three um Monday through Thursdays um. And she'll help me handle payments and just phone calls and people coming in.
Down with the prophecy, Jason.
Yeah, so now I won't have to post during lunch. That'll be good for everyone.
Good for you.
Yes. Edwin.
Baltic cuffs.
Yes, so um I texted our city council members individually to um explain what's, what this agenda item is, but I'll explain this to the public as well. So along the chain link fence at the Baltic football field, we have two paw prints um with some colored cups that go into that chain link fence and then in between that, so the Bulldogs. Um the couple of the uh baseball, softball coaches had reached out to me and said, hey, would there be an opportunity to do that same thing up at the Baltic Heights football fields? Um the cost would be incurred by either the B A A or fundraising from those, those organizations or the school. Um we have some trust and agency accounts, we have some other things like that that we could, we could go into funding to not pull from the general fund or from capital outlay, but from those already fundraised and um available funds. And um kind of decorate up the field and give it a little bit of town spirit and school spirit with um all sorts of different designs. The designs, as far as the cups are concerned, are anywhere between five hundred dollars to fifteen hundred dollars, depending on the size of the design and the makeup of the design. Um just replacing a few cups um as far as like maintenance and upkeep. The school just replaced a few cups that we had had since two thousand and twelve. Um they do not, they do not come out of the chain link fence very easily. They are also not very easy to replace or or redo, because they just redid the boss. Um and they're, they're really, it's a really quality product for them, which is, which is really nice. So they, that organization and those citizens were in the the ball association were just asking the city's approval to put those cups on the house. Um this with the funding and all those other things, the organizations themselves were working on it. So they just wanted the city's approval to mural the fence.
Do you want me to make a motion for it?
When, when they come up with a design to do, I'll make sure that that's discussed at city council so that you can see that design wants to be.
Do you want, you want to wait and do that then or?
Um if you're okay with them doing that.
Yeah.
We'll purchase, we'll purchase something and if the, it's gonna have, it's gonna say Baltic Bulldogs have a bulldog.
I think it's great, I think.
Pause, it'll be something themed between the city and the school. I told them specifically that since they're the city fields, instead of it, the football field just says Bulldogs, I said for the city field, I do want it to say Baltic. Uh that was like my stipulation.
Sure.
And then you say that it's the school. Um but other than that, I didn't really have any stipulations, so.
You need a motion and what do you want?
If you're okay with the city doing that.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It's not costing the city anything.
No, it won't cost the city.
I don't know. We wouldn't need a motion for that one, we may.
I think we do and.
Uh you're okay with us penalizing the city.
Well, this is.
Control vandalism.
Yeah. Probably don't fill the cup's little beard.
Yeah.
Well, that's in the shop. Where there's no.
Have you, you guys have seen the one at the store, right?
Yeah, yeah. It's pretty cool. Yeah, it's good jobs.
I was, I didn't know they were doing that that first year they went up in their shops.
They are, sure. I just, the yellow is the only one that's faded. The blue, I have replacement cups and didn't even need to replace them. The yellow's faded a little bit, um but they still look pretty sharp.
So next up is engineering update. All down.
Yes, uh I'll start the open access.
Yeah.
This is a replacement of um the drive-in panel. Next, their construction looks like they got it replaced last week, so looking hopefully those will out next month. Um so it'll be nice to have that on the list.
Did, did they get with Rodney Backen over there?
Yes, yeah, the landscaping was done a couple of weeks.
Okay.
So those were the only two.
Okay.
Maybe something wrong for him.
Yes.
That's good, good, okay.
Um then uh main lift station contractor continues to make progress on that main lift station uh structure. Uh starting to uh see that one uh formally. The building, they're working on some of the exterior finishes there as well as uh looking at some of the larger electrical equipment. Uh this last month, there wasn't a ton of work done just because they were waiting for those larger items to ship. They come in on seeing those control panels, V M D, those larger items, they're now being installed. Um so we'll probably see that building really take shape. Then there's a couple um site items, so need to be completed between the um generator stack and then the largest one of connecting to the campaign system of that force team that was previously installed uh connecting that's pretty much all the work that remains to be there uh to be completed there. Um so tracking really well, budget and timeline on that one. Look at that one being completed. Um with that looking for acceptance of application of five, not of forty-one thousand nine hundred eighteen cents seventy-five cents. So that's, that's again, maybe just for those electrical items that you have on site.
So we just need a motion for pay application revised for forty-one nine eighteen seventy-five.
I'd like to make a motion for stuff. That's important payment due on this lift station project for you with those nine hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-two cents.
First, second, Edward, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
True.
Aye, ayes pass.
Next up with uh transportation, I'll turn here and grant um project from last year, which means four uh grand dollars will be received. Um still coordinating with the state on um some of those uh project scopes, um so that uh come paperwork. Uh once that's done, we'll get into the design this year, but still instructions up next year. Um and I know we have really reduced discussions with um letters to the city or meeting. I know it's still planning to have that once we get a little bit further in the process, so.
Is this like maybe late winter stuff? With that, with that, like the, the letter going out to the homeowners on, on sixth.
Yeah.
And then like um maybe a city meeting with the property owners. Is this something we're looking at like early twenty twenty-six or what are we looking at? Because we're talking spring, right?
Yeah, it would probably be spring, so either early twenty-six or as soon as you get into the site a little bit, so timeline's still a little bit up there. But just knowing that that's out there, we might have those discussions, one of the city, um and mainly those rest. So I'd give.
Sure.
Same thing.
Okay.
Uh and then uh application for the twenty twenty-five uh projects, letter I give of ten most submitted uh last month. And I believe two weeks ago, um state C P O N I S G met in sight for that project. Um just walked the site, answered questions that they had on application. Um and then they gave us a couple of things that we could consider to improve the application as well, so taking those into consideration. What we built in application for uh those twenty twenty-five grand dollars. And so hopefully we can again get that project and continue to um build the sidewalk uh network through Baltic, which is. Um pile update, uh this street, um that one originally we uh thought pavement was completed. Um turns out they're not thirty feet short, they have this street to sell um. Um city line lines, uh that was actually completed today, they were done.
They did, they did do that extra strip on, okay, great.
So they completed about five o'clock today, which is.
Nice.
Really.
Great.
People started.
That's fantastic.
Uh. So.
Just a little wax.
Is it fair, any right now?
No, no, it's, it's fully open to traffic. We've had people travel already, so it's, it's.
We have to turn one inch away right as we're finishing.
So goes right to the edge of uh um so from where it was at, it went thirty additional feet to the south.
Thirty.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're all good there. Um driveway is great enough to make it, we've lifted um diving ops, diving.
Okay.
Uh there was just a little bit of a rush. Um the day that they had paved was after many huge rainstorms, so they, they found that as a place to, to go and pave. Um so between the staking that was set, then getting up there, there was just a miscommunication on that, so.
Okay.
Nothing more than the, the one car inconvenience that had to turn on today while we were paving, other than that.
Great.
No money lost and and no one else.
That's cool.
Definitely.
We're good.
Did that near everything. Did that, and that's good. Well, did you guys?
So suppose you want to get paid for it, huh?
Yes, yes. So you bring that up, um acceptance of the application number one, as well as change order number one. That change order, um you know, if something's scary, we're about four hundred and ninety-five dollars uh in the amount. And that's just for uh removal of self fence that was in the right way on this street. That self fence was from the Grant Park development um around that. Spoils pile uh right by the ladder there. So that just happened to be right in the, in the right way. They needed to remove that to get rid of or to finish the grade in the ditch there. So change order number one, free minor, uh change order, uh four ninety-five, obviously it's not gonna change much, but we're on time and I'm okay. And so move change order one first of four ninety-five.
I'm looking for a motion for approval of change order.
I will make a motion to approve change order number one of four hundred ninety-five dollars.
Second.
I see.
All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? What, sure, what you got? Uh, well, I have it, so.
Yeah. Do that self-fence need to go back in so that there's So we've had those discussions as well, that likely will have to go in which, um, if that's the right, uh, in that building. Uh, there is vegetation on the pile, um, but probably would have
Who's at that? Exactly.
The self-fence.
Yeah, right down there.
Uh, it's, it's pulverized, that self-fence, we would essentially just blow along, um, that stockpile of topsoil there, uh, just
Oh, good. Straight in the inside of the road over there. Yep.
Otherwise, like
Yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about.
Blow in that ditch. Yeah.
Just make a
I think the question, but if this is on Grant Park property and it includes an easement, why is the city paying this? Is this going to be replaced again?
I'm sure it's required.
Well, I mean, we've got to have self-fences there if they needed access To do the work.
But it's in, it's within the easement.
There's probably required, if that means some
Right.
Are we talking self fences or?
It was, it was that fence line
Yeah.
For that big dirt pile, right? So they had to access it, so you need to remove it to access it, to do the dirt in the road.
To use a dirt
Yeah, that self-fence was technically done when I go to city property.
Was it supposed to be there?
Uh, Well, that's technically should have been, if the property
You need a combination of both of them or just the one?
No, we're, they're, they're Yeah, yeah, just need a motion for pay. We will need a motion for the pay applications, and that total includes
I'll make a motion to approve application number one for that street improvements. Then I'll list them. Big number.
Not gonna miss it.
Like a mountain church.
Look for a second.
Second.
All right, any favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? All right, nice head. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to say the public works stuff?
Do you have any public works announcements?
Four minutes.
Really? I guess we're in key mom, it's key drain. Put those signs up. Proparting signs, they face east, it looks like long through the, uh, fire hall.
Yeah.
It's face the door. Um, I do think on a Generation five or whatever up. North side of town up there. I do think we need to make, or get a sign that says like, stay out of here, you know, if you
Which one?
You mean the one up there by, um, by our house?
Yeah, that one.
So, so between
People keep driving in here and I'm getting
Oh, that big green space down the center. Yeah.
Oh, it's
Why are they driving?
Right.
I, I can't imagine a normal adult guessing it's kids. Oh, yeah.
Great.
I get that.
Great way to put it.
Some of that is probably nature.
It's just completely uneven and
Yeah, well, it's just, it's down and then, uh, to the south. But it's, yeah, there's We're not, there's, we're just using pickup grow in there, some of that back.
Oh, not a side by side or
No, it was not a pickup. Um, and I don't know how to do that, but
We used to use sickle, so
So are you proposing like a sign, some signage on six?
Like, I would say signage, um, on both Sixth Street and Fifth
And Fifth Street, that's
No driving.
They're like, yeah, I don't know if they put driver's rights on it. Yeah, it's
Should be
It, it should become, I can't imagine it's It has to be kids.
Well, should be
Yeah, I think it is.
And it's like, like some signs.
Yeah.
I would think basically it's just like there are on the trails on it.
I mean, even like a white circle with a red X on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, like no, no motorized vehicle or something, I feel something.
Yeah.
And then the rumble say, uh, I don't know if this is right or wrong, I believe, I think we should fess off. Because there's no way that there's that many trees in this town.
Even if we don't ask you fans again.
And I'm getting sick of, you know, I'm getting sick of the bags that's up there.
I, I wonder if next year we shouldn't look at a couple of controlled dates a month.
Right. Be like once a week out here.
I mean, we, we could have, we can have a part-time employee do it.
But I can see a house that's out when I
That's been just
We can't send them down on it, because there's no way there's, there shouldn't be a tree left in this town for only three days.
Yeah, Eric was a
There were a lot of trees.
Well, Sunday morning, I was up early, and I see two pickups coming there from the west. They dumped it. They just literally dumped everything, hurried them, got out of it. Now, this is early Sunday morning.
They are
Yeah, yeah, they're not
That's something you can add to the budget.
But I couldn't see
Budget meeting is
Sunday morning, I'll sit down.
I'm not saying
But there's other communities that do it.
栢子s too, like Yeah. We do move and sign, or something like that, cities Yeah. Just while we're on that topic to make sure that we've gotten that ordinance, because if we're gonna add something, can then potentially find people for it, we want to make sure we've got an ordinance.
We have locked that before.
Have we?
One was in the old
There used to be a gate, wasn't there?
Yeah. And come and get a check.
Right.
Yep. I don't give you something like that, I mean, so.
Only good topics, like they said, budget meeting about maybe allocated hours and then
And the fence.
Do we have two gates though? Because the law intervenes from that other private property, even though he's got signs up? Over your road you're talking about?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, the one on the highway. Over the road.
We had to probably talk to CHS.
Yeah. Is it, that's
Because we just have an easement.
Technically both.
Don't forget this sign that says smile on your own
Yeah.
Well, we could try it.
Keep the honesty.
Uh, I, I, I'm not so sure that Brian didn't do that.
I'm just really working out the
So even if you want something Even if, if, even if you're gonna catch someone's license plates, we even be able to find them.
Thank you.
Just Like
I'll have to look at the ordinance.
Like Yeah, while littering on the city
You don't think that you are with them?
Yeah, and if there's not, then of course, that mechanism like that, I can look into drafting something.
I just want to make sure that whatever we do, we can actually
A cheap
Kind of stick it to them, where it's like, okay, yeah.
Yeah, and that's
Well, I think there's a fair amount of people that come through from out of town to drop out there, you know, yeah.
Maybe that list, stop doing
Well.
It might make us to be
There wouldn't be a true lesson.
Maybe this that he should sell
They were gonna have to start splitting firewood for the campground, we'll sell it though.
Okay, I'm
Finance.
I'm gonna move on because it's the first day of school tomorrow, and I'd like to talk to my kids and So, um, budget prep meeting, we're gonna need to schedule that. Do you want to, do you want me to send out kind of like one of those, what do you call it?
A calendar?
Something where it gives you options of dates and times and go with what's best, or do you want to schedule it tonight? It would just have to be before, um, the September meeting because That's the first draft I have to
What are you doing on Labor Day?
I'm gonna be at home. Okay, I'll do a survey tomorrow. And Eric, yes. Um, I will get you an email address with the city, so I'll let, um, the IT people know, but for now, I might need to get your email. And your
So we're in this Sierra.
Yeah, I Other than that, I don't really have anything yet, but I will in the coming months with this budget, so. Legal council mayor update, anybody?
I have a quick update, um, I don't think we revisited this, but We need to choose whether in twenty twenty-six to hold elections in June or November.
Yeah, I wasn't sure what, did, did it say what we had to do?
Uh,
Those are our options?
Those are your options, so it's just something that we need to start discussing now so that we can, uh, you know, have the proper notifications before June.
As somebody who's walked the streets in snowy weather, I would love to see June.
The only thing about that is Federal election.
Yeah, at least November, when you have, it happens to come in
That's true, yeah.
Regular
Because I think
Yeah.
We want the school where elections Because it's paying the They're gonna have a bigger sting then.
I think that we're, they'll hardly decide now, I think we've decided yet.
Right. So what do we lean to?
We talked about the same issue, and I don't think that they decided
They go to the next
Well, should we, should we lean to, are we saying we're leaning towards November?
I would
Lead it towards June.
I would
And then we can reach out to the school and let them know which way we're leading. And you see it there.
They just appointed a new school board member?
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know when the next people are up
Right.
Either, so they honestly might not have
Well, they have something
You want to just, do you want to call the business manager? And just see what your thoughts are?
Because I know Justin Simmons just got Had, um
As much as I hate doing those
They're
They're probably right, no
Yeah, you'd better, we better turn out November, and we're not changing so often.
Right.
So we just stick with, you know
General election.
Right.
General election.
So essentially those people that would be up Or April is just gonna move to November.
Darren Mars
And we don't have to be aligned with the board elections, but
Hey, I think it makes the Meanwhile, I don't think it, and it gives everybody an opportunity. I think it draws more people into vote, so I'd rather
Unless they change that.
They look to
Well, they're not gonna change the federal.
Yeah, I mean, she wasn't asking
Yeah, I do
Yeah, that's, that's
I
The school, like they do it in June, that's what the website says, is that all those terms end in June, but with the same thing that came up, they could
Right.
Well
I know, they have, they do have one person that's coming, so they will
So maybe, have maybe
It would be moved them to have it with the city and federal, because it would be cheaper.
Yeah.
Right.
Because otherwise, they're paying election workers for one, one spot.
When we talked about, instead of at the old school, the school talked about offering it, since we have We have states now offering it, potentially, the conversation was, well, we got all the rest of that, I'm doing it in the rest of the room.
Well, yeah, that would be nice.
He's setting that a lot, and it doesn't disturb class, anything, you might say
Separate entrance right there, that is nice.
That's the, the
I will try, I will try.
Hit the winter season.
Winter, yeah.
Hit the winter season, but
November
As the activities That's As the IT person, the lights won't turn on, it'll ring until I want to be
I will bounce it up then and then, and make sure, I, I do, I think it's always better if you hope to Always. That's all I got.
Okay.
I got some
You got some?
People that was involved for
Yeah.
Awesome job.
Amazing.
Absolutely.
Sally, Deb, Deb. Thank you for
And Ted, Ted's health too.
And, and Lacy.
Everybody volunteered.
And all the people that sponsor?
Yes.
Right?
I remember all the positives. Next
And Nick, you had Nikki.
Yeah, Nikki.
Nikki did a lot too, and Steve you helped.
There were so many people on our development that had never been adopted.
Oh, really? I suppose. Yeah.
I did, I'm like, this is
The streets were full, all the way down to the end.
Yeah, it was awesome.
Well, we only bought like forty pounds of
It was, it was a lot. Yeah, we ran out, so.
We're, yeah, I don't have anything unless you guys do. Yeah. All right, second?
My second.
All in favor?